President.
Councilmember Hubout.
Present.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Present.
Councilmember Morehead.
Present.
Councilmember Stevens absent. Councilmember Westco.
Present.
Mayor Kerkoff.
Present. We do have a quorum. Everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. We do not have any presentations awards tonight, but we do have a personal appearance from a Raymore Peculiar School Relay for Life team members. If you'd like to come forward.
I'd like to start off by saying hello to everybody. My name is Malone.
And my name's Jordan.
And we are the co-event chairs, or the people who are kind of in charge of an event called Really for Life. It is a fundraiser for the American Cancer Society. I don't know if you guys have heard of it before, but it's basically a twelve-hour thing where you can come and you can play games, and you end up raising money for things like the Hope Lodge, or to end-all-be-all goal, to find a cure for cancer.
Throughout the event, we have small parts where we talk about cancer, ways we can fight it, ways we can come together. And basically, even though there is fun parts in the event, it is true to the point of, we are going to beat this, and there will be a time where there are no longer people who have to worry about cancer.
That is the goal. But more than just an informational thing, we are really excited about getting people together for, one, having a common cause, and just to have fun. Because at the end of the day, having fun is something that really matters. Our event is actually -- oh, we got a little out there. Our event is actually June nineteenth and twentieth of next year, and that would be six o'clock PM to six o'clock AM, just to keep in the back of your guys' minds. And really, one of the main things, one of the main reasons why we're here, is because we want to make this event a community-wide thing. We're looking to get as many people from the community, from our schools, from other communities. We want to reach out as many ways as possible, and we think that coming here and talking to you guys and putting that little seed in your head would be a great opportunity for us to do that.
We have done the event for two years. The high school helps us out, and they allow us to use their football field. And the first year, we actually got a five-star for a rookie event, and each year, they are continually getting better and better. Last year, we raised around twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two thousand dollars to fight cancer, and this year, we plan on doing much and much more. It's going really well already.
We're very excited, and we have some great prospects. But like I said earlier, one of the things that we do is we do donate the money to a place called Hope Lodge, which is in Kansas City, which is a little housing place where people who are going through cancer treatment, like chemotherapy, or bone marrow transplants, where they can stay for the duration of their treatment. And that's a not-for-profit thing. The only way that they're continuing their run is by people like us, and hopefully, people like you guys, reaching out and making donations, and the fundraising aspect of everything like this. And that's an awesome thing for people who are fighting cancer, for people who are in the battle, for people who need a helping hand. It's an awesome opportunity for them to have some other people there around, and to have a place where they can stay, a place where they can call home, even if it's just for the duration of their treatment.
This topic is something that hits people very hard, and I think this event can bring the community together and let us all share in something that we all have been impacted with.
Furthermore, and going on from this, if we see you guys again, and if we don't see you guys again, we would definitely like you to keep this in your minds. If you would love any more information, you could talk to Sonia, you could talk to ourselves. I'm, again, Malone, and this is Jordan. And we actually have some business cards at the end of the meeting, if you guys would like, with the website where our information is posted, which is also for signup, so if you're already looking forward to signing up, you'd definitely come along. But if you have any questions at all, or any questions, comments, concerns, we are more than willing to ask at all hours of the night, or hours of the day, for those people who are actually away during the day. But please don't hesitate.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Move on to staff reports.
Thank you, sir. I would ask that Ms. Warner please make a report for the city clerk's office.
Thank you. I'd like to note to council a correction in the November tenth city council meeting minutes. It incorrectly reflects that council member Kellogg entered executive session when, in fact, he was absent for the meeting and the following executive session. In addition to that, a reminder of the MML Westgate meeting on January the twenty-fifth in Blue Springs at the Elms. Those RSVPs are due by January the eighth. Also, today, sent by email was information on the February 2015 Legislative Conference that -- to be held in Jefferson City. So if you're interested in attending either one of those two, please let the city clerk's office know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. I would ask that Mr. Crass please make a report for the Public Works Department.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just wanted to supplement my written report with a status report on our projects. We're -- coming up here in December, we are going to be advertising the Influen Infiltration Remediation Project for bid, also the Phase One improvements for the farmer's market, along with the shelter. We've taken advantage of the rather seasonable weather here, and the sidewalk program is underway and approximately forty-five percent complete. We are going to be doing some patching on Creekmore Drive later this, later this week, and the Eagle Glen Trail. All of the concrete has been placed, and restoration will take place in the spring. And that concludes my report, and I'm available for questions.
Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I would ask that Mr. Catterett please make a report for Community Development.
Thank you. Just to mention, the next meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission will be on Tuesday, December sixteenth. They have two items on their agenda. One will be consideration of a final plat for Raymore Crossing Development. This is a three-lot commercial subdivision planned for the Dean family farm location at the southeast quarter of Dean Avenue and Fifty-Eight Highway. It's actually a replat of, of the property that the Deans had, had done a couple of years ago. And then, the second item is a public hearing on the proposed Twenty-First Amendment to the Unified Development Code. This proposed amendment deals with several minor amendments that the commission had discussed as part of their annual review of the UDC in, in two thousand and fourteen. So several minor adjustments to the code will be proposed, and that will be a public hearing on that item. That particular item is available for public to view online if they want to see what the amendments do consider. Those are the only items the commission currently has scheduled. Thank you.
Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I would ask that Mr. John McLean please make a report for Parks and Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. Fearborn, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The Parks Department as the Public Works Department is taking this fall-like weather into consideration for this week. We, staff has started digging the holes for the remainder of the nine holes at the disc golf course. Concrete is to be poured this week, and hopefully, completion, completion will be done with the tee pads for all those nine holes, for the front nine holes, anyway. RFP was sent out last week for the baseball renovation, baseball field renovation at Recreation Park. The request was in search for what the cost would be for the replacement of the fencing, backstops, dugouts, and two, on two of the baseball fields, as planned in the two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen CIP. The winter program guide and review arrived in mailboxes last Tuesday. Practices start this week for, at our local gyms for, or the school gyms, for the recreation basketball program. Games are scheduled to start January tenth. Park Board will be meeting tomorrow at seven PM for the December meeting. This is due, the change is due to the holiday season at the end of the month. Staff was working hard on decorating all the facilities for the holiday. All the decorations were completed, all the decorating was completed by Tuesday for the preparation of the Mayor's Christmas Tree lighting event. And at this time, in closing, staff would like to extend a great thank you for everybody that participated and came to the Mayor's Christmas Tree event. I'll be glad to entertain any questions.
Questions of staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Just a few items from, from me, sir, and council. The work session items for next Monday night will include a charitable donation ordinance that the county had already presented this issue relative to panhandlers at intersections in the city. The council gave us direction to go back, come up with a restrictive ordinance for that particular activity. We think we've completed something that gives the council some options relative to that activity, and we'll be presenting that to you for consideration next Monday night. Also, Mike will have a fairly lengthy program to update the council on staff's plan moving forward relative to the EPA concerns that were addressed, and one of the items that we needed to do was come up with a, a solid plan. That's been in the EPA's hands now for, the, the entire plan has been in the EPA's hands for about a week now, and elements of it have been in the EPA's hands for several weeks. As a matter of fact, almost a couple of months now, and we've, we've heard no comments back yet, so we're, we're hoping we may hear something by next Monday night's meeting, but we may not, just for the council's information. Second item, just a reminder to the council that Item B under unfinished business, the developer has approached staff and asked that that item be removed from consideration tonight. It, we've checked with Mr. Willard, it could be brought forward as a second read again if the developer so chooses to continue to move forward with some sort of an incentive package request from the city. The council traditionally cancels its meeting during Christmas week if it is a regular council meeting. To that end, if you did want to cancel, would remind the council that it does take a motion, an action by the council, as we found out at the last work session meeting that we had, and that motion could be made now if the council so chooses, or at the end of the agenda tonight. That concludes staff reports, sir.
Questions of staff? Councilmember?
Seeing as how we've had some warm weather, at least today, and possibly this week, have we gotten any word from the county on whether or not their project is going to progress, or if it's delayed until spring?
The, the unfortunate problem with the school road project is that it needs exactly one day to complete, to the point where they could be doing the additional work that needed to be done in colder weather. The day that they need cannot be at any point during the day below forty-five degrees, so it's going to be a little bit difficult. They are pinning a lot of hopes on this Thursday as being that day, and have, have geared up for that. If it doesn't occur, Mr. Crass actually had the same idea as the mayor. Mr. Crass, you know, last Friday was in touch with them. We haven't heard back from him yet, and we have not heard back from a contact again today. Could they go ahead and stripe what's there without the final lift of asphalt being put on, and so that we could open school road, even though it's not completed as far as the asphalt is concerned? As soon as we hear back, we'll communicate with the council.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Move on to community reports. We've had three recent ribbon cuttings. On November fourteenth, we had a ribbon cutting for Letty's Accessories at twelve sixty-two West Foxwood Drive. On the twenty-first of November, NutriCare Human Services at four one four Remington Plaza Court. And on December fourth, Brookdale Signature Suites Therapy Services at fifteen hundred West Foxwood Drive. Move on to consent agenda. Intertain a motion to dispose of the council. Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I would request that Item A be removed from the consent agenda to be considered separately. November seventeen, two thousand and fourteen city council special meeting minutes.
Okay.
A or B, the regular meeting or the special meeting?
The, the regular meeting.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the remaining items on the consent agenda.
Just for clarification, so are removing Items A and B?
Just Item A.
Just Item A. Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda to include Item B, city council special meeting minutes from November seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. Item C, the acceptance of the Owen Good Force Main Point Repair Project. Item D, the acceptance of the two thousand and fourteen microservice project. Item E, approving the appointment of a member representative for Midwest Public Risk. And Item F, the approving of appointments to the City Arts Commission.
Second.
We have motion and a second to approve the items listed on the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Councilmember?
I just want to thank all the people who put in applications for the Arts Commission. You know, it's a, it's a fledgling program that's getting off the ground, and I, I'm looking forward to seeing what they accomplish, and looking forward to good things from them.
Other comments? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. You have a consider Item A?
The council would need to come back now to consider Item A from the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Item A, city council minutes from November tenth, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Item A. Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to abstain from this since I was not here for that meeting. That's the purpose of that. Thank you.
Other discussion? All in favor? And let's see, closed. I'm staying. Okay. So the item passes. Six, I'm extension. Thank you. Move on to unfinished business. The second reading of Bill three zero one eight. A moment, please.
The second reading of Bill three zero one eight by title only, an ordinance appointing Ross Nigro Jr. as municipal judge for the city of Raymore.
Intertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill three zero one eight, the appointment of the municipal judge, Russ Nigro.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill three zero one eight. Any discussion?
Ross Nigro. I, I apologize for, for misspeaking, and, and, and hopefully, that doesn't preclude me from that get-out-of-jail-free card.
We would also note that the title lists him as John Nigro, so he apparently has three names, sir.
Okay. Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a personal value thing for me, and I mean no disrespect by any means, but I, I have some, some conflict, ethically conflicts here that, in the process of interviewing for judges, we interviewed, and Mr. Morehead had recused himself from the interview process, and I, I noticed that Mr. Morehead did vote last time, and I seen his explanation, and I, I accept that. But I, I, I feel that it is wrong for Mr. Morehead to vote on this, being that he was not in part of the interview process, did not see the nuances of the different candidates, and I, I would think that it would be appropriate, in my own judgment, that Mr. Morehead recuse himself from this vote. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Morehead?
Just for clarification, the reasoning given that was referred to was, being a practicing attorney, a number of the applicants that had applied, I've either had cases with, or I have practiced before their courts. I felt that the concern that I had, there was no direct conflict of interest with a single applicant. But I felt that, being the only attorney on the, on the council, that I may, incidentally, have sway based on personal experiences or knowledge that I have of them. As a result, I did not accept the applications, the, the resumes themselves, and I allowed the council to come to their own determination. Purpose for the vote at the, the last public meeting was, it was a ministerial act to approve. I actually, you know, have no objection to the applicant that was chosen, and therefore, there was nothing inappropriate about the vote.
Here we have a motion and a second. Approve the second reading of Bill three zero one eight. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Next item was removed from the agenda, so we'll move on to Bill three zero one nine, the second reading of Bill three zero one nine.
The second reading of Bill three zero one nine by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, renumbering sections four fifty-one point zero one zero through section four fifty-one point one two zero of the Unified Development Code of the Raymore City Code.
Intertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill three zero one nine.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill three zero one nine, the renumbering of sections four five one dot oh one oh through four five one dot one two zero.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill three zero one nine. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Here we have the second reading of Bill three zero two one by title only.
The second reading of Bill three zero two one by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Allegiant Service Group, Inc., for the replacement of city hall and municipal circle light poles. City project numbers fourteen dash one nine three dash two zero one, and fourteen dash one eight six dash seven zero one, in the amount of sixty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars, seventy-nine cents, and authorizing the city manager to approve change orders within established budget constraints.
Intertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill three zero two one.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill three zero two one, award of contract for the city hall and municipal circle light pole replacement.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill three zero two one. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the second reading of Bill three zero two two by title only.
The second reading of Bill three zero two two by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen capital budget.
Thank you. Intertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill three zero two two.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill three zero two two, the budget amendment for the city hall and municipal circle light pole replacement.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill three zero two two. Any discussion? Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes, I have a question. Contingency fee of three thousand, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, which is five percent to complete this project. In my recollect, recollection, I thought we generally used a contingency fee, or a contingency percent of ten percent. What's, am I wrong, or is there something different here?
It varies by project and complexity of project. This, with the exception of the fact that there's a great deal of installation that's associated with this, we almost could have done this project as a request for bid, and just taken the bids on the equipment itself with, with one light item. It's going to be a fairly simple project, in consultation with the, the contractor who was awarded. We feel very, very confident that he has considered everything that's going to be underground on all this. The five percent should do it.
Okay, that's what my question was, and I appreciate staff's explanation on that. I'm just used to a, a ten percent there, so, thank you.
Other discussion? Motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill three zero two two. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The second reading of Bill three zero two three by title only.
The second reading of Bill three zero two three by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, approving the Sixth Amendment to Eagle Glen Master Development Agreement between Great Plains Real Estate Developments LLC and the city of Raymore, Missouri.
Intertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill three zero two three.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill three zero two three, the Sixth Amendment to the Eagle Glen Master Development Agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill three zero two three. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The second reading of Bill three zero two zero by title only.
The second reading of Bill three zero two zero by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, calling for and establishing the dates of the general city election to be held on April seventh, two thousand and fifteen.
Intertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill three zero two zero.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill three zero two zero, calling for the April seventh, two thousand and fifteen election.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill three zero two zero. Is there any, Councilmember?
Since, you know, for the rest of the agenda is going to be fairly uneventful. I have a question for our city attorney. You know, because I always like to throw you a curveball, and this is going to be my last opportunity. If we don't call for the election, do we just stay in perpetuity?
It could be removed by citizen initiative.
Fair, fair enough, sir.
Other discussion? There's a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. The second reading of Bill three zero one seven by title only.
The second reading of Bill three zero one seven by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending Title Five, Management Use and Occupancy of the Rightofway, Chapter five fifteen of the Raymore City Code.
Intertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill three zero one seven.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill three zero one seven, amending Title Five, Use of Rightofway.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill three zero one seven. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Excuse me. I think it takes care of old business. We'll move on to new business. We have the first reading of Bill three zero two five.
The first reading of Bill three zero two five by title only, an ordinance of the city of Raymore, Missouri, amending Chapter one oh five, Elections of the Raymore City Code, Section one oh five point zero six zero, Statement of Candidacy, and authorizing the mayor to declare this as an emergency.
Staff report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll call on Ms. Warner.
Thank you. The General Assembly recently repealed RSMO Section one one five point three zero five, which now requires municipal, municipal candidates to comply with RSMO Section one fifteen point three four two. That outlines certain obligations for candidates for municipal office. This section requires candidates to affirm they are not in arrears for any state income taxes, personal property taxes, municipal taxes, real property taxes on their place of residence, or they are not a past or present corporate officer of any fee office owing any taxes to the state. The proposed bill enacts these changes in City Code Section one zero five point zero six zero, the Declaration of Candidacy, to reflect the statutory changes, as well as language written in the Charter, Section three point two B, regarding felonies. In order to enact these changes before candidacy filing begins December sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, staff has requested the mayor to declare this as an emergency.
Questions of staff? Did you have a question?
I have a question for the attorney, yes.
Okay.
My question has to do with what the statute says there about payment of state income taxes. And I can remember several months, almost maybe a couple of years ago, we had this issue come up, and there was a United States Supreme Court decision saying that you could not use failure to pay income tax either at the federal level or the state level, because they could always be contested. And so that would not, could not be used against the person that was running for office. But they said that the others having to do with property taxes could. And one of the things that they use, they said that poor people then would be discriminated against, because if they couldn't pay their taxes, they would not be allowed to run. So what I want to know is, if the United States Supreme Court action takes precedence over the state legislature on this, and if that should be left in there, or if it should be taken out. Because I can understand the personal property, there's no contesting of it, but you could, I can see where there'd be times when somebody might want to contest their state or their federal income taxes, and that that's just not supposed to be used against them. Is there some way we can find out about that before we make a final decision?
No.
No, because we need to act tonight so that our statement of candidacy is valid. I'm not aware of any such Supreme Court decision, but I will attempt to look, or if you can guide me, look at it. What I am aware of is that this statute has been passed, and Ms. Warner and I have been through a couple of classes and webinars, listening to the discussion from various city attorneys and municipal league officials, and the requirements in the statute we need to follow because they are there. And then we've opposed some additional qualifications by our charter and amendment of our code before with respect to the felony. And so what we have here is an amalgamation of both what the current statute says plus what our requirements are. And if they contest those taxes, Ms. Huber, then we could, we could take the position that those aren't validly owed to the state if they are contested. But at the point, you're making your declaration, that's your decision as a candidate to declare whether or not you're current. We won't be investigating those past that, but this is your declaration of candidacy. And if you were in fact delinquent, someone could challenge that. Do you have any other thoughts on that, Ms. Warner?
Well spoken.
All right, since this is an emergency reading, I'll open the floor for public comment. If anybody in the public would like to come forward, state your name and address for the Seeing no one coming forward, I'll close the public comment. And I'll move on to entertaining a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3025.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3025, amending the City Code Section 105.060, Statement of Candidacy.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 3025. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Kellon?
Yes, I'm kind of curious. How long has this been going on? Because it's coming before us in an emergency reading. Kind of concerned that if this was known about before, you know, this agenda came out, why wasn't it brought before? That way, we could avoid a, an emergency reading.
We actually received our notification from MML that this change was enacted. This one goes into effect because another one was, because another section of statute was deleted. So I think that they were having some difficulty getting to a point where they could give us a clear line of direction on what needed to be done. We actually received it the day of the last council meeting, our notification from MML.
Other comments? Here we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the second reading of Bill 3025 in its entirety.
The second reading of Bill 3025 in its entirety, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending Chapter 105, Elections of the Raymore City Code, Section 105.060, Statement of Candidacy, and authorizing the mayor to declare this as an emergency. Whereas the 97th General Assembly passed House Bill 1136, which enacted certain qualifications required of candidates filing for municipal offices. And whereas it is important to amend the language in Section 105.060, the Declaration of Candidacy Form of the Raymore City Code, to ensure candidates for the positions of mayor and council member are qualified for the office they are seeking. And whereas the Raymore City Council determines these changes to the City Code are necessary for the city to remain in compliance with state law. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Raymore, Missouri as follows. Section 1, Section 105.060, Declaration of Candidacy Form, is hereby amended as follows. Section 105.060, Declaration of Candidacy Form. The form of said written declaration of candidacy shall be substantially as follows. Statement of Candidacy, State of Missouri, County of Cass, I, the candidate, being first duly sworn, state that I reside at their address, City of Raymore, County of Cass, Missouri, that I am a qualified voter in the ward containing my place of residence, that I have reached the age of 25, that I have been a resident of the city for two years, that if filing for the office of council member, I have been a resident of my respective ward for six months, that I am not currently aware that I am in arrears for any filing or payment of state income taxes, personal property taxes, municipal taxes, real property taxes on the place of residence as stated on the Declaration of Candidacy, liens, or I am not a past or present corporate officer of any fee office that owes any taxes to the state other than those taxes which may be in dispute, or forfeitures or defalcation in office, and that I have not been found guilty of or pled guilty to a felony, and that I do hereby declare myself a candidate for the office of the respective ward, to be voted on at the municipal election to be held the first Tuesday of April 2015. And I am eligible therefore, and I hereby request that my name be printed upon the official ballot for said election for said office, and state that I will serve as such officer if elected. Signed, subscribed, and sworn to me before the date of filing, City Clerk, City of Raymore. Section 1, emergency reading. In order to comply with state law requirements and implement candidate qualifications before the filing date for the April 2015 election, the mayor hereby authorized the passage of this ordinance as an emergency bill. Section 2, effective date. The effective date of approval of this ordinance shall be coincidental with the mayor's signature and attestation by the city clerk. Section 3, severability. If any section, subsection, sentence, clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such portions shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. Duly read this first time the 8th day of December 2014. Be it remembered that the above ordinance was approved and adopted this 8th day of December 2014 by the following vote.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 3025.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3025, amending the City Code Section 105.060, Statement of Candidacy.
I second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3025. Is there any discussion?
I just have kind of an operational question. Obviously, it deals numerous times with candidacy, which will be coming up in the April election. Would that also apply to all of us as setting board members, assuming passage? Would we then need to sign documents stating that we were current on all of our taxes? I'm just curious.
I'm going to refer to Mr. Willarth on this one. But my initial thought is, these refer to candidates.
That was my assumption, too.
And I, in fact, during one of these webinars, where every, because everybody throughout the state, because they announced it so late, there are a number of other cities who are scrambling with tons of questions. And I had actually written that one down, but had to leave before I had the opportunity to type it into the webinar. So I'm going to leave it to Joe.
Well, I stayed in class but didn't pay attention. This would generally apply to the candidates who are filing a declaration of candidacy. However, your qualifications remain in fact, and therefore you need to remain current in taxes and not be found guilty of or pled to a felony in the same qualifications attached to your fitness to remain in office. We will not be asking you to sign a declaration, but if you would be deficient in some of those, if raised or brought to our attention, we would have to bring it to the council's attention, who is to judge of the qualifications of its members, which sadly, we've had to do in the past, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember?
I was going to say, actually, that question is more fitting in Item B, which is the next, which is the qualifications of council members, that actually applies to what we just applied to the candidacy, but very appropriate.
Here we have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3025. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Here we have the first reading of Bill 3026 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 3026 by title only, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending Chapter 110, Mayor and Council of the Raymore City Code, Section 110.120, Qualification of Council Member, Terms of Office, and authorizing the mayor to declare this as an emergency.
Thank you. Staff report?
Thank you, sir. I'll call on Ms. Warner.
Thank you. As with the prior bill just considered, again, the General Assembly has repealed a certain section of state statutes and reenacted a different section, 115.342, or 0.342, that outlined certain obligations for candidates for municipal offices. This proposed bill enacts these changes in City Code Section 110.120, the qualifications for council members to reflect the statutory changes we have discussed. And it also adds the City Charter Section Regarding Felonies. And in order to enact these changes before candidacy filing begins December 16, 2014, staff has requested the mayor to declare this as an emergency.
Councilmember Wesco?
Just a point of clarification. Our heading says, City Code Sections 110.140. Should it read 120?
Yes. Corrected, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, since we're on points of clarification, Ms. Warner can be upset with me that I didn't catch this earlier. What we did in both Bill 326 and 327 is lift over the language from Declaration of Candidacy and insert it in these bills with respect to qualification. And so if we look in the red highlighted portion in the fifth line, where it reads that "I have not been found guilty or pled guilty," I think it would be more appropriate to delete the words "I have" and insert the candidate "has not been found guilty or pled Because this isn't the declaration, this is the actual qualifications. Or instead of the word candidate, we could say, "The office holder has not been found guilty or pled guilty." Perhaps "office holder" would be a better language than candidate.
Mr. Willarth?
Yes.
If I read that back, can you confirm for me the correct language would be inserted, beginning with "or forfeiture or defalcation in office," and the candidate has not been found guilty of or pled guilty to a felony?
I think we want to say in that the office holder, instead of candidate.
Thank you.
This requires a public hearing, so I'll open up the floor for public comment. Please identify yourself for the record and keep your comments under five minutes. Seeing nobody coming forward, I'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on to entertaining a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3026.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Bill 3026, amending the City Code Sections 110.120, Qualifications of Council Members, Terms of Office, as amended.
Begging.
We have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 3026. Is there any comments? Councilmember Kellon?
I've got some confusion, and I appreciate what Mr. Willarth has said here. But if this is to take effect, which I suspect it will, and this becomes ordinance, with the wording that he just said, may I have you repeat that, Mr. Willarth? That... Okay, yes, thank you. At this point, after the passage of this, that the office holder is in office, would already disqualify them at that point. Does that, does that make sense? Or do you see where I'm going with that? By the fact of this passage and being qualified, being found qualified, you've been found qualified. Then as you go into the law, it's saying that, it's kind of redundant after the fact.
We're codifying the qualifications to be a council member or office holder. The state gave us new language on qualifications that you have in red, and Ms. Warner and I are using this opportunity to bring that code section up to speed with others that you had adopted through the code with respect to the felony conviction, and that's why we're putting that language in. So we aren't trying to do anything new. We're trying to make it, well, we are with respect to the state statute, excuse me, but with respect to the rest of it, we wanted, so when you read the qualification to be a council member, you were getting in one place all those qualifications that constitute being one.
And I appreciate that. It's just that I'm having a difficult time with myself and trying to apply this to the office holder, you know? And I'm not trying to be argumentative. I'm kind of thinking out loud here that...
You could say the council member.
That the qualifications has, needs to be met before the candidacy is approved. But this here is for, basically, what I think, city, sitting council members? Am I correct? So this here would be kind of, you know, if this makes any sense, after the fact, for me. I, Mr. Mayor, I see wheels spinning down here, Mr. Wesco.
I think it's important to note that the first reading that we did was for the candidacy. So that's to declare candidacy and run for election. Then, once you win, and then you're sworn in, at this, that point, this we're reading now actually takes place. And keep in mind, you know, we run for two term, for a two-year term, and the mayor for a three-year term. So this also covers us in that period of time to where, you know, you win election, that following year, if you become delinquent in taxes, this steps in and applies. Whereas if we just did it for candidacy, it would only apply the one time when you ran. This actually covers you through your entire term.
Thank you, Mr. Wesco. I appreciate that.
Mr. Feuerborn?
Thank you, Your Honor. And if I may, if you go up to before the red writing that is on here, this particular section of code is infinitely more sweeping, and it's one of the reasons we need to do this one as an emergency read as well, because it doesn't just apply to sitting council members, if I may. It applies to, nor shall any person be a candidate for a council member, elected a council member, or hold office as a council member. So it's a much more sweeping section of the code, and yes, in fact, you're correct. Where not only, this particular section not only applies before the fact, but after the fact.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate the explanation, Mr. Wesco. I appreciate your comments also. Greatly appreciate it. The only question I would ask is, Joe, would you agree with what's been said? I, you know, I look to you for competency in legal counseling here.
Well, though, it's been questionable tonight, since I didn't catch my corrections on time, but yes, I have agreed with what's been said, and I think it's a very important provision that we put in place.
Here we have a motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 3026. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the second reading of Bill 3026 in its entirety.
The second reading of Bill 3026 of its entirety, in its entirety, in ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending Chapter 110, Mayor and Council of the Raymore City Code, Section 110.120, Qualifications of Council Member, Terms of Office, and authorizing the mayor to declare this as an emergency. Whereas the 97th General Assembly passed House Bill 1136, which enacted certain qualifications required of candidates filing for municipal offices. And whereas it is important to amend the language in Section 110.020, Qualifications of Council Members, Terms of Office, of the Raymore City Code, to ensure candidates for the position of council member are qualified for the office they are seeking. And whereas the Raymore City Council determines these changes to the City Code are necessary for the city to remain in compliance with state law. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Raymore, Missouri as follows. Section 1, Section 110.120, Qualifications of Council Members, Terms of Office, is hereby amended as follows. Section 110.120, Qualifications of Council Members, Terms of Office. No person shall be eligible to the office of council member who is not 25 years of age, a citizen of the United States, and an inhabitant and resident of the city for at least two years next before his/her election, and a resident of the ward from which he/she is elected for at least six months. Nor shall any person be a candidate for council member, elected a council member, or hold office as a council member, who is in arrears for any filing or payment of any state income taxes, personal property taxes, municipal taxes, real property taxes on the place of residence as stated on the Declaration of Candidacy, liens, or is a past or present corporate officer of any fee office that owes any taxes to the state other than those taxes which may be in dispute, or forfeiture or defalcation in office, and that the office holder has not been found guilty or pled guilty to a felony. guilty to a felony, all members of the council shall hold their office for a term of two years. Section 1, emergency reading, in order to comply with state law requirements and implement candidate qualifications before the filing dated for the April 2015 election, the mayor hereby authorizes the passage of this ordinance as an emergency bill. Section 2, effective date, the effective date of approval of this ordinance shall be coincidental with the mayor's signature and attestation by the city clerk. Section 3, severability, if any section subsection sent as clause, phrase, or portion of this ordinance is for any reason held invalid or unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such portions shall be deemed a separate, distinct, and independent provision, and such holdings shall not affect the validity of the remaining portions thereof. Duly read this first time the 8th day of December 2014. Be it remembered that the above ordinance was approved and adopted this 8th day of December 2014 by the following vote.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to dispose of the second reading of Bill 3026.
Mr. Mayor, with we approve Bill 3026, amending the City Code, Section 110 dot 120, Qualifications of Council Members, Terms of Office as amended.
I second it.
Motion and a second to approve the second reading of Bill 3026. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. We have the first reading of Bill 3027 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 3027 by title only, and ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending Chapter 110, Mayor and Council of the Raymore City Code, Section 110.010, Qualification of the Mayor, Terms of Office.
Staff report?
Thank you, sir, I'll call on Ms. Warner.
Thank you. Again, as repeating in the prior two bills, due to state legislator changes and deletion of one section of RSMO, reenacting 115-342, outlining certain obligations for candidacy to municipal office. The proposed bill enacts these changes in City Code, Section 110.010, Qualifications of Mayor, to reflect the statutory changes in, as well as the language written in Charter, Section 4.2A regarding felonies. Because the term of the office of mayor is not in this election cycle, staff is not requesting an emergency read of this bill.
Thank you. Questions of staff? I entertain a motion to dispose of the first reading of Bill 3027.
Mr. Mayor, with we approve Bill 3027, amending the City Code, Section 110 dot 010, Qualifications of Mayor, Terms of Office.
I second.
Motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 3027. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Keller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to go out on a, on a line here, that I think that it's, it shows that there's a difference here tonight, that we are holding council members to a litmus test, or a standard of, that, that raises to the importance of an emergency reading, but yet we are not holding the office of mayor to the same high standards that we are the city council. That's my two cents, and that's what I got to add, thank you.
Do you do realize that the office of mayor is not up?
Yes, I, I, I did hear that, and I'm, I still stand by that. It's, if we're going to hold the council members to the same high standard, that I think that we should, because there's only four that are up for election this, this April. So that, that only covers half of the council. I, I would think that we would hold the same high standard and the same rigidity to the office of mayor also with an emergency reading.
Councilmember Dogg, go on.
In my opinion, the reason we need the emergency reading tonight is because candidates are going to be filing. The mayor's not going to be filing, so we're going to approve this, let's say, at our next meeting, so the mayor will still be held accountable, the same as we are, except for the difference of two weeks, if you want to look at it that way. We just need to get it going right now, so that people who are filing for candidacy are held to that standard from the beginning as they file, and we're not going to have people filing, filing for mayor this time around, so it's not an emergency to get it done in a shorter amount of time.
Councilmember Keller?
And I respect that, it's just that I, I see a, a difference here between the standards of the, the council and the mayor, that's what it seems like to me. I, even though I, I totally agree with what, what you say in your logic and, and your reasoning, I just see that there's a difference of standards.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion? Councilmember, woman?
I sense that Mr. Willers had something to say, was that correct? I'd like to hear it if he does.
There is no intent by the staff to have two different standards for the mayor and the council. In my opinion, the code provisions that place these qualifications are present and will place them on both offices. If you're uncomfortable at this point, that we are doing it, not doing it as rapidly, you could move, and if three-fourths approve, you could do this as an emergency measure tonight and have Ms. Warner read the, the measure in full. We didn't do it because we have a tradition of not liking emergencies. I apologize, we had to do this one that way, the legislature passed it in August, but its effect was not legally clear to all concerned in the municipal law field until Mr. Fearborn indicated, the material came down from the MML right about the time of your last meeting, and that's why we're very, I appreciate very much your indulgence in your passing of this, because I want the codes to be consistent, or, or, excuse me, our code to be consistent with the state law and the provisions for candidates, so there's nothing unclear when Ms. Warner has candidates come through. If the mayor candidates were coming through, I would have been insisting on this as an emergency also. At this point, in my opinion, it's your discretion, if the mayor wishes to declare it, or three-fourths of you wish to declare it an emergency, you have that option, and if not, you can wait and take the matter up at the, the next reading. The only difference would be we would perhaps not have the guidance and wisdom of Councilman Wesco, who...
Okay, we have a motion and a second, further discussion, Councilmember Dogg, go on.
Do we need to amend this one the way we did the one before, to say the office holder instead of that "I have"?
Yes, we do, in the language, which we would go through and read.
Councilmember Wesco?
I move to amend my motion as we amended the last one. Is that correct?
Just in the language?
Just in the language.
Oh, all right. So we're approving the first reading as amended in, in the, the wording in Section 1110 010, to delete the words "I have" and insert "The office holder has"?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
A motion and a second, is there any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to...
Point of order, we voted on the amendment to the motion, now we have to, on the motion.
Back to the main motion, sorry, thank you. Back to the main motion. All in favor? Motion carries. Did you vote? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to the first reading of Bill 3029 by title only.
The first reading of Bill 3029 by title only, and ordinance of the City of Raymore, Missouri, amending the city's schedule of fees and charges, and it, as it pertains to Chapter 130 Municipal Court, Section 130.290 Court costs of the Raymore Municipal Code.
Thank you, staff report?
Thank you, Your Honor. In August of this year, the governor signed into law House Bill 1238, which amended Section 488-607 of the Missouri State Statute. This section of statute allows the governing body of any municipality within a county that has a domestic violence shelter to place a surcharge on tickets for each court case involving criminal action or violations of municipal ordinances. The amendment allows governing bodies to impose the surcharge in an amount up to $4 per ticket, an increase from the previous $2. Currently, the City of Raymore charges the previous maximum of $2 per ticket. Hope Haven has submitted a formal request to the council to have the surcharge increased from $2 to $4, and the council has asked that it be placed on their agenda for consideration, and an ordinance has been prepared for you all accordingly.
That concludes staff reports, sir.
Thank you, questions of staff? Thank you. I entertain a motion to dispose of Bill 3029.
Mr. Mayor, with we approve Bill 3029, amending the city fees schedule to include domestic violence fee.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 3029. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Keller?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember speaking about this just last week, when we went through this at the work session, and then as I was sitting at break today, I was reading through our, one of our local newspapers, the North Cast Herald, and noticed that some of our neighbors have not opted to go to the $4, $4 fee, and I still support this, I think it's good, this money goes to the Hope Haven, and that, it's a worthy process, but I, I will point out that not all of our neighbor communities are, are doing this.
Other discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to the first reading of Bill 3028.
The first reading of Bill 3028 by title only, and ordinance approving the Third Amendment to the redevelopment plan for the 58 Highway West Extended Redevelopment, TIF area, and approving redevelopment project number four, and adopting tax increment financing therein.
Thank you. Staff report?
Yes, thank you, sir, I will call on Special Economic Development Council, Mr. David Bushak.
Good evening, my name is David Bushak, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Gomorren Bell in Kansas City. We are bond counsel and special economic development counsel to the city. I hope the Boy Scouts didn't leave because I came up. I provided a, the presentation to the TIF Commission, I'll provide a, a shorter version of that presentation here this evening, a short summary of the ordinance. The Galleria TIF Plan was approved in 2005. The plan originally included four projects, including Project Four, which is the property that is located south of the Sam's Club store. There's a particular procedural rule that comes into play with this ordinance tonight, and that is that every redevelopment project needs to be approved within 10 years after the plan is initially approved. So what that means is, the council needs to approve Project Four by January 23rd of next year, or the city loses the ability to approve that project as part of this TIF plan. So we're essentially up against the 10-year deadline. And as we were going through the process of preparing for the bond issuance that the city council approved earlier this year, that issue came onto our radar. So the developer elected to prepare a plan amendment, so this is what you're considering by approval of this ordinance, is the third plan amendment, third in sequence, but it deals with Project Four. And it essentially serves as a placeholder for Project Four, because we're up against this, this special, this special case, this 10-year rule in this case. We previously discussed this as an amendment to the city's policy, the city's economic development policy. We've discussed this project and the particular issues that it creates. It's acknowledged that this is a speculative TIF project at this point, because the developer does not have any tenants, any leases signed, any, any prospective tenants at this point, but in order to preserve the ability to use this as a project as part of this plan, again, we're up against the 10-year deadline, so an ordinance needs to be approved, if it's ever going to be approved by January 23rd of next year. The developer acknowledges that an amendment to this amendment would need to occur at some point in the future, when development actually happens, so this will be back through the TIF Commission and back before you eventually. So as I said, in non-legal terms, this is essentially a placeholder, because we're up against this 10-year deadline. There's a particular condition that has been included in the ordinance to deal with this issue. Section 6 of the ordinance is a, a special condition that we've drafted in this case, it provides that no reimbursement will be provided to the developer until a contract or, most likely, a contract amendment, an amendment to the contract the city already has with Raymore Galleria, the developer. No reimbursement will be provided until that contract has been executed. So again, we're, you're essentially just preserving this as an option, with all details to be negotiated at a future date. Final procedural point is that the, the Third Amendment document, at, at the TIF Commission meeting, representative from the county pointed out that the Third Amendment has some particular language in it that deals with how the surplus pilots are distributed. I won't get into too much detail, but the surplus pilots are essentially half of the captured incremental increase in property tax revenues that are distributed out to the taxing districts, that's an issue that we've dealt with in, in some detail in the past. The county representative pointed out that it's actually the city, as opposed to the county, that distributes those revenues, whereas the document, as prepared by the developer, recites that it's the county that does it. So what we are working on is some changes to a few sentences to the Third Amendment document, so it matches what actually happens in practice, with the, the surplus pilots actually being distributed by the city. So what that means in practical terms is, the Third Amendment document, as it stands today on file with the city clerk, as compared to the version that will be on file with the city clerk when we get around to second reading, a few of those sentences will have been changed, we will have issued the proper notices, but that's, that's purely an administrative matter, it's not anything as to the substance of the document. That concludes my testimony, I think the developer's here to make a brief statement, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now or after their testimony.
Councilmember Wesco?
Just a clarifying question, this TIF is a 50%, is that correct?
Yes.
Just kind of a general question, this, my understanding, and I'll make sure I'm correct, basically, we're just preserving or extending the TIF, if you will, for another 10-year period, is that correct?
No, not quite. Each, maybe to give you a, a brief overview, the furthest exterior boundaries of the TIF is the entire redevelopment area, and then there are four redevelopment projects that are subsets. When each redevelopment project is approved by the city, it has its own 23-year life. Project Four has not been approved yet, but the special rule that I explained is in play is, all of those redevelopment projects must be approved by ordinance within 10 years after the plan was originally approved. We hit that 10-year deadline next month. So if Project Four isn't approved by that date, it can't ever be approved by the city as part of this TIF plan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Developer would like to come forward?
Thank you, Steve James with the Hush Blackwell Law Firm, on behalf of the developer, Raymore Galleria LLC, with me here tonight, as well as Mr. Ruben Pate with the development team. I'll keep my remarks very brief, I think David did a good job of kind of queuing up why we're here tonight. It's essentially just a placeholder, but we did want to express our appreciation to you for considering this tonight, we appreciate staff's efforts in bringing this before you. We're, we're proud of this development, there's been a lot of successes along the way, the Lowe's store, the Office Max, more recently, the, the Sam's Club store, and some of the new restaurants you've seen pop up, and we really, we really view this as an opportunity to continue the successes and continue what we believe has been a successful partnership with the city, so. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions about, about the project, but again, it's, it's just sort of a placeholder, our best guess as to what we think will occur, but, but certainly will be back before you in the future.
Questions of the developer?
With this being kind of a, a new thing to us, the speculative nature of this, gives me a little bit of concern, as we had a few minor issues on the development of the, the property next to Ryan's Steakhouse. For example, we have a curb cutting entrance off of 58 that we wanted to close, we seemed to, staff seemed to have a little bit of difficulty getting the easement granted from, from your client to be able to put the entrance off of, I, I forget the name of the street, Jim, as it goes off of 58 there between Ryan's and Firestone. It would eventually be the relocated Kentucky. Yes, thank you very much. So I would hope that we would be able to work out those issues going forward, assuming that this were approved.
Yeah, certainly, I mean, I think, you know, we're happy to continue cooperating with the city on, on these things, and as David mentioned, there's no, you know, new reimbursement being approved here tonight, we're going to be back before you with a, with a, a contract amendment, and we can kind of work through any, any issues at that point.
That's good to hear, sir, thank you very much.
Other questions? Thank you. I entertain a motion to dispose of first reading of Bill 3028.
Mr. Mayor, with we approve Bill 3028, the Raymore Galleria Tax Increment Financing District, the redevelopment project four.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the first reading of Bill 3028, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. That takes care of new business, we'll move to public comments, anybody wishing to make a comment from the public?
Mr. Mayor, may I have a point of order? And maybe this is directed at city staff, do we have a need for our December 22nd, 2014 city council meeting?
No, sir.
No, sir, unless MML comes to us with another surprise.
Then, Mr. Mayor, I would move to cancel our December 22nd, 2014 regular city council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to cancel the December 22nd city council meeting. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. So we will cancel that meeting. Now we'll move on to public comments. Anybody in the public make, wanting to make a comment, please identify yourself on the record. Keep your comments to a maximum of five minutes. Seeing nobody coming forward, we'll move to mayor/council communication. This evening, Mr. Boehner, you'll get to go first.
I have no comment this evening.
Mr. Holman?
Two things, although I think they're mostly all gone. I appreciate, again, the students and the Boy Scouts that were here tonight. You may not pick up a whole lot on this, especially at a younger age. It may seem very boring, but as you get older and you wanna scream about the stop sign or the lack of the stop sign in front of your house, to use an overused story, this is the great place to start learning about that process. And congratulations to now Judge Nygro, appreciate you being here. You went above and beyond by staying beyond us actually appointing you, so great job, congratulations, sir. Thank you.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to welcome Mr. Nygro. Congratulations on the, the judgeship of Raymore. We're looking forward for your service and you, thank you. Thank you for your interest and your willingness to serve. I'd also like to thank everybody that we approved tonight for the Arts Commission. Like what Mr. Wesco said earlier tonight, I am extremely excited about this commission, and I'm very happy to see the, the participation of applicants that we got. It was, it was overwhelming, and we have seven new members of a commission that I have a lot of hopes and dreams for here, so thank you all for your willingness to serve, and other than that, the other thing I would say is tonight is my big brother's birthday. I would say happy birthday to my, my brother Bobby Kellogg in Des Moines, Iowa, and that's all I got. Thank you.
Councilmember Hubach?
I have two questions I would like to ask the police chief, so that I don't have to answer them when I'm in Judge Nygro's office. All right. One of them is, what constitutes improper backing? I'd never, it's a $104 fine, so I'd like to know what that one is. And then the other one is, what is our improper lamp colors? I've never, but that's only a $79 one, but it's, it refers to it as lamp thing as improper color. So what are those two?
As far as improper backing, if you can back safely, so if you're backing out into traffic, i-if you're backing in a lane of traffic, those sorts of things, and, and mostly, you know, what we're looking at when we're looking at improper backing is, is the individual in the vehicle able to do so safely.
Because you're not talking about parking lots or anything like that, you're talking about backing onto a major street or a highway?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the, the lamps being of an improper color, what color are they supposed to be?
Are you looking at headlamps?
Well, it just says lamps, improper...
Headlamps being white in color, brake lights being red in color.
Lamps improper color, $79.
That's pretty, pretty expensive, but...
She's looking at the schedule of fees.
Those ordinances refer to, as I said, headlamps being, you know, white in color, tail lamps, brake lights being red in color, is what that references. So we, we would be, if we were writing that violation that you're referring to on the fee schedule, that would be, you know, some color, you know, sometimes you see individuals with blue lights, you see, do you have off-colored headlamps? He looked really guilty there for just a second. Have to start following him around. It's, those lamps that are different than standard color, those are, are the, the ones that are like brighter than, you know, standard headlamps, that have been modified by either the individual or, or some after factory modification.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wesco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanna first start off by thanking city staff for your professionalism and your patience. Some of the times dealing with me hasn't always been a pleasure, so I wanna thank you for not throwing things. You know, as I've been around to various meetings and, and met other city staff, I can honestly say that Raymore city staff is one of the most professional ones that's around, and, and we are, we, we benefit greatly from that. So I wanna thank you for that. I wanna thank Joe for his kind words earlier. I'm gonna have to download them and save them for posterity. I wanna thank the mayor and the rest of the council for their, their camaraderie. You know, over the last four years, I think we've done a lot of positive things, and we've definitely put the city on a path, I think, for prosperity and, and for good things. And as this is my last meeting, I'm debating whether or not to filibuster to, you know, to make sure that it lasts just, you know, a little bit longer, but as there's a executive session, I will refrain, so, thank you.
Councilmember Morehead?
On that note, it's an early Christmas present, then. My last chance to give a little dig to you. Okay. I wanna thank troop 124 for being here. Boy, they missed the climactic TIF discussion there at the end, but no, I had a chance to talk to them as they were coming in, and glad to see the scout troop here. To also piggyback on the commending staff, I do have to say, while we had the pleasure at the work session, we have a new staff member that's being introduced to the public tonight, so I wanna welcome our new assistant city manager, and glad to work with you. And then finally, I have to point out that I had the pleasure of attending a wonderful band concert at Eagle Glen last week with my son, and one of the things the band teacher did was have parents, the kids had to teach their parents how to perform, so I think it's important to acknowledge that we have somebody here in the room that rivals Ron Burgundy for a mean jazz flute, and that would be North Cash Herald's Lori Edmonds. So I had a wonderful time seeing her perform, as well as my wife, and so it was fun with the kids, and so I just had to give Lori a little dig. I'm hoping that'll make the paper, by the way. And with that, I hope everybody has a safe holiday.
Councilmember Abdeelgawad?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wouldn't agree with Mr. Holman. It was nice to hear so many voices in here saying the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. I always like to hear more and more voices, not just us. I also would like to take a moment to recognize and thank our new members of our brand-new Arts Commission for their willingness to serve, and I must say, I was quite surprised by the number of applicants that we got. There was a lot of interest in that, and so I was excited to see the interest throughout the community for starting this new group. And then finally, since Malone and Cole came to talk about Relay for Life, we're about six months out, so it's time for me to start talking about Relay every time, sorry, you guys, but it's really important to me. I'm glad that Malone and Cole came, like I said, and Callie was here too, and she's our representative from the American Cancer Society, and she works really hard with our group on the Relay Planning Committee to get us going, tell us what we need to know, and be sure we're organized and ready for the event. A few things I'd like to say, just a reminder that Relay for Life is not a race, it's not a 5K, it's not, some people think, oh my gosh, I have to run for 12 hours, and that's really not at all what it is. What Relay is, is you get together a group of people, for a lot of people, it's their family, for a lot of teams, it's coworkers, it could just be a group of friends that want to work together and raise money for the American Cancer Society. Malone talked a little bit about some of the big things that American Cancer Society does, but they help support people with cancer, they help support research, they help with legislative issues. The American Cancer Society does a lot of great things, and they look at all the different areas that cancer encompasses, the pancreatic cancer that I know we hear about, breast cancer, the whole gamut. So the event is 12 hours, it's on June 19th this year, from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and when I signed up to help with the committee, I made it very clear that I don't do all-nighters. So I encourage anyone who's my age, or younger, older, anyone who doesn't wanna stay up all night. That's not a necessity, but you can still get a team together and come. The American Cancer Society, Relay for Life, it honors cancer survivors, we honor caretakers of cancer survivors or people who've had cancer at the event. It's great to raise money and show, show support, and as Malone said, it's just a very, very fun time, a great time to come and have fun with, like I said, coworkers, family members, friends. I'd like to challenge everybody who's listening, gather together some friends, gather together some family, get your coworkers together. This is a Ray Peck Relay for Life, and so we've talked a little bit about maybe we need some challenges, maybe the city of Raymore needs to challenge the city of Peculiar, or the Raymore Council needs to challenge the Peculiar Council, or fire departments or police departments, but find some ways to really turn this into a community-building event and pump it up a little bit this year. We raised $22,000 last year, in our second year, we raised over $20,000 in our first year two years ago, and we're hoping to do even bigger and better this year. And just real quick, one of the big things we talk about in our committee meetings and with people who are interested in Relay is why do you relay? Why is this important to you? Why do you spend your time on this? And of course, almost everybody can name a whole handful of people they know that have been impacted by cancer, whether it's a family member, or a friend, or a neighbor. But just a quick story, last year at the Relay, we had a pretty small team from my work last year, but as I was walking around talking to people, I was talking to a family, a Raymore family who has a little girl with cancer, who I wanna say is around 10 years old, and they were packing up their things, getting ready to leave, and the dad came over to me and thanked me profusely for helping plan the event and the fun that she had had, and he said that at one point in the night, she said, "This is the best day of my life." And to hear that from a kid who came to our event that, you know, is struggling with cancer every day was just amazing, and really made it at home. This is why I do this, this is really important.
Thank you. And Boy Scout troop 124 is no longer here, but they were here working on their citizenship and community merit badges. We do have reason to go into executive session. I entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we move into executive stu-, let me start again. I move that we move into executive session to discuss real estate acquisition matters as authorized by statute 610.021 subsection 2.
Second.
I'm second.
A roll call?
Councilmember Abdeelgawad?
Yes.
Councilmember Boehner?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubach?
Yes.
Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes.
Mix it up a little bit. Councilmember Stevens absent, Councilmember Wesco.
Aye.
We will go into executive session, we'll return only to dismiss the main meeting.